Meeting of the Waco City Council on November 2nd, 2021 to order at 3:05 PM. I would invite you to join me for a moment of silence as we, in doing so, there's the lives of two members of our community that we lost that I want to lift up. The first is Lester Fissler, the father of our former city manager Dale Fissler, and the second is Scott Russell Borderoud, the father of our council member Josh Borderoud. Scott and Lester will be deeply missed by their community, family, friends, and we ask for comfort for their families during this time until one day when they'll be reunited. I know that Mr. Borderoud was a Marine, a seminary grad, an Army chaplain, serving our country in the Vietnam War, the Gulf War, and the War on Terror, and his family has described him as a happy warrior, full of good cheer, boundless energy, and uncommon courage. And Josh, I know from your swearing-in ceremony how proud he was of you, and I want you to know that our thoughts in person with you. And Lester Fissler and his wife Marilyn were described by family as inseparable for 67 years and renowned for their ballroom dancing prowess in their later years, and he was said by his family to be a highly engaged father, introducing his sons to miniature airplanes, remote-controlled cars, minibikes, powerboats, water skiing, and fishing, and was, knew well the joys of grandfatherhood and great-grandfatherhood. So we just take a few minutes now with me to join me in a moment of silence as we think of these families and stand with them as we go forward. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the city council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you're here to speak, here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the city secretary staff at the registration table outside of the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation, and staff will distribute those to council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. Esmeral, has anyone completed a card? All right, then we will move on to our, we will now recess the regular session and convenient work session with a report from our city manager.
Thanks, Mayor and council. Good afternoon. Have a couple of employee recognitions and organizational updates for you today. First is, just wanted to recognize the employee appreciation picnic that happened on 22th of October. This is an event that occurred at Brazos Park East and was meant to just appreciate the city of Waco team. Hundreds of city staff members got out and greeted by burgers from Double R and, as well as yard games, in case you're wondering. Deidra can play a mean game of Jenga.
There's video.
There's video of her success in winning Jenga multiple times. So, no, I really wanted to say a special thanks to our Parks team, several members of the Parks team. If y'all don't mind standing up, did a great job.
Woo-hoo!
Yeah. That we put on, and this team that we got here today, Graham Seibel, Gary Proctor, Frank Santos, Caleb Schmellin, Logan Long, Susan Kraus, Jessica Maxwell, Brittany Combs, Tom Bock, Megan Davis, and Caitlin Bunch, just do an amazing job of their normal activities, but also on this day, which is so important, to say thanks to our employees. They just knocked it out of the park. They were also supported by a planning committee from multiple departments that put on the event, and just wanted to say, you know, thanks to the council members that got out and spent time with our employees because it meant a lot, and that's what keeps all 1,600 of us serving the citizens of Waco, and appreciation's a big part of showing our thankfulness. So, thanks to the team and thanks to the council for being there.
Let me just say really quick, Bradley, Parks team, I know that events are wrapping, ramping up again, and y'all are the dream team for getting that stuff done, so thankful for that, but this is a special one because it honors these public servants, like Bradley said, the 1,600 people that serve our community so diligently. And if there's one thing Waco's known for, it's a great city staff throughout the entire organization of dedicated, hardworking people. I think there was one time I saw someone criticize a city staff member on social media, and it was crazy how many people in the community just like, "City Waco staff is the best staff." So, this city is known for its dedication and its employees, and so we're thankful for our employees and thankful for this event. So, thanks for that update, Bradley.
Sure. You mentioned the city of Waco's got a great team. The next highlight I wanted to provide is all about adding new members to that team, and it really, you know, just really wanted to highlight the work of Human Resources and Water Utilities. They hosted an indeed hiring fair for more than 30 vacancies that the Water Utilities had most recently, and they hosted it last week on Wednesday. We had 14 candidates interviewed onsite and 10 offers of employment extended onsite. That's a pretty unique turnout. Typically in a job fair, we'll have two or three jobs fulfilled in a job fair, and the work of the Human Resources team here to really instantly schedule interviews and screen candidates onsite in that moment really resulted in a big win for our community. I want to specifically thank the HR team that was involved. If y'all don't mind standing up, ladies, Lisa Wilcox, Anna Hostatter, Tori Miller, Miller, and Evie Lopez. I think it's a moment where just a really creative approach, a different way of doing things created a different result for us, and that's something that our organization strives to do, is lean forward and come up with new strategies, and it, just very thankful from my office standpoint, very thankful, and I know the council's appreciative as well.
I remember being in a budget and audit meeting where this kind of creativity came up and was discussed, and I think you're exactly right. We do lean forward as a city, and again, with the labor market being what it is, creativity's going to be imperative, so thank you guys.
All right, and last organizational update, I did want to announce a promotion, an internal promotion, late last week, named Kent George, who's, has past served as our Economic Development Manager to the role of Economic Development Director. The council's well familiar with Kent, but go ahead, Kent, why don't you stand up? He loves the limelight, by the way. But Kent, Kent actually just celebrated his third year anniversary here at the city of Waco and has served us well over the past three years. For those who don't know, he's got a bachelor's of business from the University of Texas Arlington and has more than 15 years of local government experience. During his short time here in Waco, he's worked on a number of our largest projects, whether that be the Marriott AC Hotel, which he shepherded, a riverfront project, Cottonwood Creek Marketplace, and numerous other industrial developments that he's had a hand in, and so I'm just, I'm thankful to have him on our team and looking forward to seeing his impact in our organization as he takes on this new role. All right. We do have one informal report on the agenda today, and we also have one public hearing. On the public hearing, Renisha Hudnall, our interim director of Community Services, will cover it later in the business session. Related to resolutions, I'm going to highlight, we have 22 on the agenda, and I'm going to highlight kind of three groups, the first being an economic development project. It's resolutions 801 and 802, an economic development project along Imperial Drive for Capstone Mechanical. If you're not familiar with Capstone, they're a Waco-born and bred company, been in operation 16 years in the engineering and services industry. The company's actually seen some really robust growth over the last few years, and their headcount currently sits at 167 full-time employees. The, the project, the economic development project that is on your agenda today will see an investment of more than $5.1 million in their site, including a 30,000 square-foot expansion and the addition of at least 68 new full-time jobs. And of note, Capstone, you know, they're a good quality employer, they pay about $45,000 a year to their average wage, including benefits, but probably more of substance for, for the council's purview is 10 of the 68 new jobs that they're creating are going to be hired from community partners like the Greater Waco Advanced Manufacturing Alliance, Gwama, Mission Waco, Mercy House, and similar kind of second chance employment opportunities. And this is the first time we see an employer stepping out and really putting action behind having a program like that, so I'm excited personally for, for this item to come forward in that manner.
I'll chime in here, Bradley. This is so exciting because Rick Tollis out there in Capstone runs such a great operation on the face of the business itself, and in this expansion, which creates, just on the face of it, additional jobs, additional economic benefit to Waco, but the holistic approach that he's using, well thought out, community oriented, community facing, where he is getting new employees in Waco and also adding this element of training, internship from these groups. Look on page 169, is this an impressive, impressive 21st century way of doing business? And that value to those interns from these groups is just the exposure to corporate culture, the training, there's so much benefit and value to that, and it's exciting to be part of this new way of thinking, of training local, our local workforce and upskilling there. So I'm excited to be part of this. I can't see approval yet, right Jennifer? Not till tonight, okay? But I like this concept, very good.
The next set of resolutions I wanted to highlight are resolutions 804 to 806, which address important vehicle purchases that are recommended by staff, that's three separate items. These items seek to authorize the purchase of multiple vehicles, solid waste, public work, serving multiple city departments, and I wanted to use this as a moment because much of the content in the items talks about should we go electric vehicles, should we not, and wanted to remind the public that recently the city council approved a consultant to create a plan for vehicle replacement across the entire city operation, including as part of that work, a thoughtful strategy for the electrification of our city fleet. And so until that study's complete later in 2022, my focus as your city manager remains in the short term on focusing or targeting small format vehicles like sedans and some SUVs for electric vehicle purchases, and on the long term, using traditional internal combustion engines for large format specialty vehicles like those that are presented on the items today. That approach, I feel like is in alignment with the current EV availability out on the market, as well as documented usage by EVs in these specialty large format vehicles. So, wanted to highlight that item for your consideration as well.
City Manager Ford, I really appreciate you sharing some of the why behind the what of this. Something that came out often when I talk with constituents is a desire to see the city of Waco really lead the way of other Texas communities, particularly communities of our size, in addressing our climate, our carbon footprint, and looking at how we protect the climate for years to come, and I hear about this particularly from our Gen Z residents who are becoming of age and engaging in social and civic engagement, and also recognize that this is their planet and the planet of their children and their grandchildren. So, I'm excited to be able to share this information out to residents, that we are taking a strategic and innovative and also thoughtful approach to this, so our investment will yield a high return and will also serve our climate and our community for years to come. So, thank you to city staff that has worked really hard to hear the desire of council to be more climate conscious and forward. I appreciate it.
Thanks, council member. The last resolution I wanted to highlight is Resolution 811, which is a playground redevelopment project at Buena Vista Park to include swings, shaded play structure, and necessary accessibility improvements. Barsh Construction's the responsive bidder and recommended party that we'd seek to contract with in amount not to exceed $253,992, and mainly wanted to highlight this because Buena Vista is a park that not many Wacoans know about.
That's right.
And it's actually quite significant and pretty. It's an 18-acre park that was constructed in 1966 and includes a pretty popular fishing pond that we stock in partnership with the state of Texas. Knowing that, the staff has proposed the design of the playground to utilize a wetland theme, which is consistent with the park's surrounding environment, so I'm excited to see that improvement make its way to the neighborhood surrounding that facility.
City Manager Ford, I wanted to just thank you for highlighting that, and Parks for really sewing into this, this gem that we have in the Buena Vista Park. I think that one of the things that I, I'm most excited about is exposing, you know, the young people in the community to nature, to those fishing events that, you know, TPWD does at, on the river and that kind of, I mean, I know, I know you might not believe this, but I grew up pond fishing and, you know, much to my husband's chagrin because they're saltwater people, but, I mean, that was the most fun that I, you know, I've ever experienced, and, you know, having opportunity to do that and, and as a resource in our community is just, just incredible, and I'm so excited that we'll be doing more with this facility, get, creating opportunity just to encourage nature's educational outcomes and presenting it in a way that is edutaining, and so those are the things that, that work for our children to build their footprint of being responsible to and for its community. So, you know, yet another shout out to Parks and city staff for making this a priority.
Well said. I'm embarrassed to say I did not know that there was a stocked pond in our park system. I guess like Waco, but not stocked. I mean, this is awesome, so the fact that we can go take families fishing so conveniently located is really exciting. So, excited for the playground, but, but to your point, there's a lot of good opportunity here.
All right, and ordinance wise, we, we have none on the agenda today.
Look at that.
Look at that. That means we'll have 100 next time.
That's right.
My apologies.
See how they set us up?
If there's no further questions, that concludes my report to you today.
City Manager Ford, I had one question on Resolution 796, there was, which speaks to amending the policy of the city of Waco investments. I think going through it, I was okay with all of them, except I just had some reservation on one, one of the changes, which was extending the weighted average maturity of the, of our investments from one year to two years. So, I'm not sure, I'd like, I would, I guess I would, maybe I'd do this tonight, I don't know. Recommend that we accept all the changes except for that one, and I can maybe expound tonight on, on why I think it's important that we leave it at one year instead of two.
Councilmember Holmes, you're obviously the work session, y'all can discuss it all you want, but you're right, it would have to be by motion tonight, the final motion.
And then just maybe 30 seconds to my fellow council members on this, just, and if you read through it, there's, we're suggesting changes to allow longer-term investments in our liquidity portfolio, liquidity cash portfolio. It's a tough time right now to get decent yields, I get it as a banker, but I'm not sure that we should be asking our liquidity advisor to chase yield, because I think it's more important that we have cash available in our, in our current period years than not say, I need, I need to get a 2% yield, and this, particularly in this interest rate environment. So, I want to look closer at that, extending the one-year weighted average maturity, which means our cash investments, and I think at the last, at the last council session, we talked about alternative investments that would get a higher yield, but throw it out there a little bit further on, put our cash into longer-term investments. I want to do a little more analysis on taking it from one year to two years, because to me, that's a pretty big step. In that light, I know that we have about 40% of our cash now is in reserve, which we don't anticipate using in a one-year period, so that kind of makes sense, but to allow the weighted average maturity to go up two years, that's kind of pressing, pressing the issue. So, anyway, I just want to have more dialogue with Paul, and I think he's not here today. I'm okay with all the other changes in the recommendation from staff.
Okay. Well, council member, if you want to speak, I was going to say we can, I guess it'd be my recommendation, we
Pull it.
Keep it on the agenda, but move that to one year, keep it as one year, and then we'll just refer that section
Yeah.
back to budget and audit for further deliberation.
Yeah, and then if we want to bring it back into future one, and there's good logic to taking it to 18 months or two years or whatever.
Yeah, we can have a fuller discussion at a, at a future budget audit meeting.
Superb. Thanks, Bradley. That's all.
All right, that's, Mayor, that's all I have for you today.
So, right now, the consent agenda includes resolutions 2021, 795 through 816, the following have been pulled, so 796 will be pulled, and then, so, correct, so we can make that amended motion? Is that, we'll need to pull that from the consent agenda, correct, the one that Jim just addressed? And then 813, I believe, council member Borderoud and council member Palmer have filed affidavits of substantial interest on that, so we'll pull that one. And then, is my understanding that we need to pull 804 from the consent agenda because it is being reconsidered? Is that correct as well?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other items that council would like to pull from the consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I would like to pull Resolution 2021, 800 from the consent agenda.
Very good. Are there any other items that council would like to pull from the consent agenda? All right, the next item on the agenda is the work session, items 2021, 798 through 792. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. Work session 789 is a discussion on Dr. Pepper Museum's tourism numbers, projects, renovations, exhibitions, events, and future plans. I'd like to invite Chris Dyer, President and CEO of Dr. Pepper Museum, to present this morning, or this afternoon. For those that haven't heard this presentation in years past, I can tell you, it's always fun and informative to hear about the work of this very important institution in our community, that we're very fortunate to have influencing our region, so, Chris, take it away.
No pressure, right?
No pressure.
Well, first off, I want to thank the mayor. I don't know if you guys noticed, but we had a lot of Baylor students in here lately, and they were my, a lot of my class in here, that part of our museum studies curriculum is to force them to go to a city council meeting to, to really understand how government works, because a lot of times, when I got into my career, you know, I didn't go in front of city council until I had to, and I didn't understand how important it was. So, they were here, and then Dylan presented in my class and did a great job. So, he got a lot of hard questions because that's what my students do, that's what we teach them to do, so anyway, I appreciate that. So, thank y'all, I'll be brief. I'm President and CEO of the Dr. Pepper Museum. I got here in 2018, grew up in Waco, so like a lot of people, I came back, so really excited about the opportunity here, and let's see, I always put this up, the last time I came here was in 2019, seems like a world ago, so it's good to see the, the newish council members here, and so it's just more of an informational report about what's, what we've been going on, had going on, and what we do as an organization. And I always put this up here because it's a big vision, but it's a realistic vision because we are a nonprofit museum, we have the largest collection that we know of in the world, and we collect, we don't just collect Dr. Pepper, we collect everything soft drink related. We're really an advertising museum for, for lack of better words, and, you know, like the world of Coke is an amazing place, but it is a advertisement for, it's a for-profit museum. It's really a, it's a corporate museum, so we're, we're a little different because we're not owned or operated by Curie Dr. Pepper. The way we're set up is a little different. We, we are a nonprofit museum, but we're also, we have a for-profit entity that we operate, so we pay, we pay in a lot of tax, we bring in a lot of retail revenue, and we also have a title holding corps, so we have three different entities that we, we work through. So, today, I'm really going to talk a little bit about the museum, because I'm not necessarily going to show the numbers from the for-profit entity, but they all kind of go hand in hand, and this is really what we were looking like leading up to the pandemic. So, on the far right, you can see where we are now, we're now a little over 140,000 in visitation, that's pretty amazing considering what happened, but we were just under 100,000 during the pandemic, because we, basically the first week of spring break, we shut down after that, and so we were closed for quite a while. So, you could see we were very like the rest of Waco, we were really on a positive upswing, and we'll catch it pretty quick, so that's exciting to see, and we're really probably pushing over mid 140s right now. Admissions revenue goes hand in hand, you know, you saw it happen in 2020. We figured out really quick what we were doing in 2018, so you're, all of a sudden you saw this revenue change, and so we were really riding pretty high, and then just like everybody else, we had a little downturn, so we're recovering nicely, but, you know, we, we hope that will continue, and as you can imagine, with our retail, it's similar, very similar, because it's based on people coming in the door. So, over the pandemic, we probably, we estimate that we lost about a million bucks in revenue, and luckily, we were really taking care of our house and everything, so we survived, but it was interesting, and this is what we're most proud of. I think that's part of the reason they brought me here, but it's really not me, it's just my staff and our donors. We're, we're really dedicated to growing our endowment because we want to be here another 30, 50, 100 years, and for those of you that don't know, we've been around for 30 years in downtown. So, we like to say with the Texas Ranger Museum, that came in a little before us, we were one of the original tourism assets of Waco, besides the beautiful community. So, we have a lot of projects going on, we didn't, we didn't stop going during the pandemic, and we were fortunate to be able to do that. First off, we're always proud to say that our staff is 100% vaccinated, we're, we're a nonprofit, so we can do such things. We brought in the, I shouldn't say the flu truck, but we brought in the flu shot truck, and so we offer that to employees free of charge, because we're a tourism business, and, you know, we want our visitors to be safe and feel safe, and we still require our staff, frontline staff, and out on, on the floor, they wear masks, so when you, when I go out on the floor, I'm wearing a mask, when my programs folks are out on the floor, they're wearing masks. So, that's been an interesting ride, but that's not a discussion for today. So, I think since last time, we received a facade improvement grant, we really appreciate that from the city. Our cupola is kind of our crowning jewel, and it, and you can see on the left, it wasn't looking so great, so thanks to that, we replaced the dock along Mary Street, we resealed and pointed the brick, cleaned it up, and replaced the cupola, which was a huge undertaking. So, that's a project that just wanted to report back on, that's why that looks so pretty, and it's actually more historically, historically accurate than it was in the beginning, and the grandson or son of the original carpenter on that redid the restoration, so that's kind of cool. During the pandemic, we, before the pandemic, we realized that tourism is changing, people want experiences, we have to do more than just a passive, you walk in and you see stuff. So, we built experience, experience spaces over the pandemic, so you can go in and do a couple things. This is just a family enjoying our Make a Soda program, they learn about soda, how to make it. We also, we, we preach moderation, we're not trying to get you to drink a lot of soda, we know that it's not great for you, but we know that you can enjoy it in moderation. And we also have a Taste of Soda, where you can be a taste tester and a product sampler and all that, so we, we sneak some education into there, and so we did this at a time when our, our school tours went away, and that's a huge amount of revenue for us. We have 10,000, 15,000 school kids from all over the state coming in on buses every year. We didn't have that during the pandemic, but these two programs more than made up the revenue for that, which is amazing for our organization, and then it's all coming back. So, you know, we put in all the safety protocols, but that's an exciting thing, so I encourage y'all to come back and bring your families. We've also opened our food truck, we did all this great stuff during the pandemic, you know, and so now we have a food truck. We, we were at the zoo, we'll, we'll be at the zoo frequently during the summer, we'll be out at Baylor next week, and we're out at the fair, so this is something that our for-profit can do that can help the nonprofit. Also during the pandemic, we got licensed and branded from Also, during the pandemic, we got licensing branded from Dr. Pepper Corporate as the original home of the Dr. Pepper float, and also, more importantly, the original home of Dr. Pepper. That's a big deal, because we have licensing agreements with them, that, that we can say that, because it was invented here, and that's, no other community in the world can say that. So, we're really proud of that branding, and thankful to corporate that is allowing us to do that, and trusting us to do that. We gave out scholarships during the pandemic, we have a entrepreneurial scholarship that goes to a graduating high school senior that's, that's looking in the business field, and that kind of fits our Free Enterprise Institute mission. So, we're still giving out scholarships, if you see that. So, very public, any, any student in McLennan County that's pursuing a degree to that nature can get that scholarship. The other thing we did is that we acquired the property at three twenty-one South Fifth Street. I don't, if you walk out, if you've been to our building, you walk out of administration, that lot with the two metal buildings right across the street at the corner of Jackson and Fifth, was something that we wanted for years, and I set my sights on it when I got here. And one of the big reasons is, we want to control our destiny, we want to be able to expand, and it also was the original site of the Dr. Pepper Factory, or the Artesian Manufacturing and Bottling Company Building. A lot of people don't know that, so from nineteen hundred to nineteen oh five, that's where the original site was located. And then they built our beautiful building that you see today, that the tornado left a smile on, that's what we're supposed to say, not a scar, but if you're walking down the street, you can still see the, the cast iron columns in the, in the ground. So, we're really excited about acquiring that half acre of property downtown. The other thing that you probably noticed is at three seventeen South Fifth, we've converted that lot into Pay Park. We did so for a variety of reasons. One, our parking lot was full all the time, and it wasn't for visitors or to the community. Two, we had some theft problems, some break-ins. You know, people that travel here, a lot of times, they just don't lock their doors. They see it as a safe community, and it is, but, you know, they kind of let their guard down when they're having fun. So, we've had a lot of trouble with that, some pain handling, but we staff it now, we have a human in the parking lot at all times. We created four or five new jobs, which we're excited about. And really, the bigger reason is that, for a long time, we have two facilities that are over a hundred years old. So, there's constant maintenance, and it's pretty expensive to keep eighty thousand square feet of historic building going. So, those proceeds that we get from this parking will ultimately go into maintaining our historic facilities. Twenty twenty-two projects, we've reviewed our strategic plan, and we have kind of a seven-point plan, but one of our biggest ones is to reinterpret the museum, and I have my associate director behind me, Joy Summer Smith, she's really in charge of all our exhibits, our programs, our collections, and she does amazing work, and we realized as a staff that we don't tell everyone's story. And, we are doing the sit-down-to-take-a-stand exhibit about the nineteen sixties lunch counter protest. It actually happened in Waco, a lot of people don't know. And, so, we're reinterpreting every exhibit that we have to tell everyone's story, because we realized early on that not everybody could have walked into a nineteen fifty soda fountain and gotten service. And so, that's a really important story that we need to tell, and we want everybody to feel welcome in our building, and that's part of our DEI plan. So, we have a, a lot of work, and this is really the first step, and this is our community, you might, community panel that's helping us with it, you might recognize some faces, there may be a city of Waco employee on there or so, so. And, and then it's fully funded, that's, that's the great thing about this. Rappaport locally, Summerly in Dallas, and then, of course, Institute for Oil History. And so, we're having an opening on the twentieth, you'll all get invitations, and to see what that's all about. So, this is three twenty-one South Fifth today. If you've seen that big mud hole, that's our property, we, we have plans, and working on that, and that will ultimately become parking, and this is the site of the original plant, so we're really excited about that. And you can obviously see the silos behind it, there's a reason we want to keep that corridor open and facing us. These are the plans for that. CPNY, who's working downtown, we've hired them to manage the design phase, this is essentially what the parking lot will look like, twenty-nine new spaces, we're hoping early twenty twenty-two, we know how that, how construction goes, but the city's been great in working with us and solving our very big Fifth Street problem, which is drainage, and the quiet zone. The cool thing about it is that it'll access on Fifth and exit on Jackson, so it'll make it a lot safer getting in and out of this spot than it was before. And then also, Joy and her team will work on some site interpretation, to give it a little interest and a sense of place, and talk about what went on at that site, and it's very important to us. And the, a lot of people ask us, why are you not developing it, why are you building a parking lot? We don't know exactly what we want to do with it, so we, we're, we're still in the planning phase, but we know we need parking, and we need to get people off the streets down there, because now we have forty employees, so that, that could be a big issue. This is our next plan, if you probably, there's the cupola that the city helped with, the roof is a mess. There's five different materials on there, you can see the pitting, you can see the, the patching, and so that'll happen this year with grant funds, we're in twenty twenty-two, really excited about it, so that will probably involve us asking y'all to let us shut Mary down, Mary Street down for a little while. And those roofs, roofs are very affordable, let me tell you. But we'll get it privately funded, and we're excited about it. We're also working with Creative Waco right now, to do the mural on, art apprenticeship mural on Jackson, because you've seen our building, it's kind of blah over there, it's right across the street from Live Oak, so we're, we're trying to help pull people in and just give our, give a sense of place where we are, as the train rolls by. And then, a commercial exhibit, everybody knows Larry Culpepper, no, we didn't fire him, we had nothing to do with that, so that commercial exhibit will be coming in pretty soon. So, my point is, you know, we have different things coming on, going on all the time, and we want to make sure that Waco residents come in. And with that, that's all I have. So, if you have any questions, let me know, but we do appreciate your support, and of all things tourism in Waco.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions or comments for Chris?
I'll just say, congratulations on the recovery and getting admissions back up, and the numbers all back up, and it's one of the treasures in Waco, and we're glad that you're in charge of it, and I'm enjoying my Dr. Pepper.
There you go. It's a very positive trend, so.
Lovely.
Right. Thank y'all.
Thanks, Chris. We appreciate your presentation, I'm super excited about the lunch counter exhibit, I know how hard you all have worked on it, and I think that it's so important that we get to, we Wacoans get an opportunity to experience all sides of history. I think that is the one thing and the pleasure that we have the opportunity to do, especially those in heritage and cultural tourism, in museum work, we get those chances to tell all the stories where, at times, our education has not, and our formal education has not. So, I applaud your efforts and your, the efforts of your staff for being intentional, and how you entertain, edutain our community and all of our visitors, so thank you for that.
Thanks, and, you know, I don't ever get political, but the, the one thing that museums can do is, we can tell history as it was, and that's, that's a role that we really pride ourselves in being involved with, and we're jumping in pretty, pretty good right now.
I like it.
So, we're excited about it, so thank y'all.
Yeah, culture matters, and you're, you're bringing good culture to our community with intentionality, and that's what we appreciate, so thanks, Chris.
Thank y'all for your support.
Absolutely. Next, we have a discussion on our Economic Development Strategic Plan with Kent George. I, was that, Bradley, I'll turn it over to you now for that. You can give the intro. I just know you're, you're as excited about this as I am, I think. No, we're glad to bring this discussion forward, a brief work session forward, to talk about our Economic Development Strategic Plan. Of course, Kent will, will have a brief intro, and then I'm excited also to, to have Tracy McDaniel from TIP Strategies joining us via Zoom, I believe. This is a project that we, I think, have all been looking forward to in our spring retreat. The city council identified economic development as your top priority, which means it's my top priority as well. And so, Kent, if you'll walk us through what you've been working on, and then turn it over to Tracy.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Over the past three months, our economic development team has been working towards establishing a new economic development strategic plan for the city. As you see on the slide, we released a request for proposal on August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. We closed the date for receiving those proposals on October fifth, twenty twenty-one. We received eight very competitive proposals. Scoring was complete on October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. I had the pleasure to lead our search for the most qualified candidate to assist the city of Waco and its economic development department with the establishment of the Economic Development Strategic Plan, and it was great excitement that I introduced to you the firm that scored the highest among our very qualified candidates. TIP Strategies was selected from a group of eight very competitive proposals. At this time, I would like to introduce Tracy McDaniel with TIP Strategies. She will provide information this afternoon about her team, their qualifications, and their approach to this very important project to our city. Tracy?
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone. I hope that's better, I can hear myself now. And so, I just want to thank you for the opportunity, for being with you today. I'll have an opportunity to really give you some history about the firm, and talk about our strategic planning engagements. My colleague Jennifer is here with me, and she will talk a little bit about our understanding of the project. So, next slide, please. At TIP, we design strategies that engage and inspire leaders and support the community's vision for the future. Next slide. We have offices in Austin, Boston, Seattle, and globally, we have reach, we've been in business twenty-six years, one of only a few national independent economic development boutique firms around. We have a team of about twenty-four leaders, and we love to call them practitioners, because they've been in the business of leading organizations, doing research, recruiting companies, bringing and engaging anchor institutions for strategic partnerships in communities across the country. Since nineteen ninety-five, we have completed over five hundred engagements, that's forty-four states and five countries. The next slide. We provide the following services: strategic planning, economic analysis, workforce assessment, talent strategies, and organizational development. I want to tell you a little bit about Jen, and she's been in this business for over a decade, with experiences in strategic planning, implementation, and partnership building, with a focus on economic development. Her career has had air in places like the urban planning in the city of Austin, the District of Columbia, Government's Office of Planning, Department of Transportation, and the Department of the Environment, and she also was very instrumental in recovery and resiliency work at IEDC, the International Economic Development Council. My background, first of all, I'll, I'll say this, I am a hometown girl, and I'm really excited about that. I have an extensive background in economic development, organizational development, equity and inclusion, marketing, disaster recovery. I worked for five governors, leading statewide economic development and tourism initiatives in Texas, New Jersey, and regional efforts in Houston, and also Austin. As part of that, I've led some public-private partnership campaigns, generating over fifty-five million dollars in funding for economic development efforts. Currently, past Chair of IEDC, and again, most proud of, and I'll say it, is, you know, being from Waco, Texas, I, that is my forever hometown, I'm fifth generation, my family has roots there, and I am honored to be a part of your team to be, to execute this project. Now, our advantage, we believe all of these experiences that I just outlined provide a very unique advantage for TIP Strategies to build and assist the city of Waco in preparing its ten-year economic development plan. Jen?
Great, thank you so much, Tracy, for that introduction. Could you go to our next slide, please? We wanted to start by kind of reflecting back to the city of Waco, what we have understood to be the goal of this process, with the emphasis on the actionable strategy. I don't think, you know, anyone is interested in a plan that just sits on a shelf, that no one ever looks at again, so we really are focused on making sure that what we develop, you know, not only spur investment and development in the city broadly, we've also got that focus on downtown Waco, and really looking at that inclusive environment that supports, you know, the wide variety of talent and businesses that you have in the city. Next slide, please. When we look at, you know, what informs the strategic plan, we can break that down into three major categories here. The first is what you tell us, the beginning of the project especially, and we come in, we have meetings with community leadership, with staff, with focus group discussions, these can be topic-based, as well as stakeholder interviews, surveys, and workshops, really trying to come in and get an understanding of the community from the folks who live there. We also look at what the data tells us, and that is, you know, part of our process, doing an economic assessment, benchmarking against peer cities, doing any sort of industry analysis that might be required, and then combining those two things with what our experience tells us as well. Our staff has a very broad experience, we'll use that to kind of develop some of these strategies and initiatives for Waco, looking at best practices, and then also current trends in economic development. Next slide, please. What you have here is a list of what we were asked to do in the contract, and will not pain you by reading every single line to you, but, you know, I would just like to point out a couple of things. One, you know, looking at that targeted business recruitment strategy, we're talking about entrepreneurs and small businesses, you can see downtown Waco here, placemaking, looking at that next-generation approach to economic development incentives. I think COVID has really created a game-changer for communities, and that is something that we'll be looking at going forward. And then we heard a lot about wanting to align processes, so working to align what the chambers are doing, working with the initiatives at Baylor, and making sure that, you know, some of the major players in the region are on the same page going forward. Next slide, please. We proposed three phases, these are three phases that we typically employ in our projects, starting with discovery, and that really goes to that, what you tell us, what the data tell us, sort of section, followed by opportunity, where we're starting to use what we learned in discovery to start identifying some possible strategies, some possible projects, and then, you know, going to implementation in that third phase. So, that is based on what we learned in discovery, as well as opportunity to really create a plan going forward of what the city can do actionably with the strategy we've created. Next slide, please. Here you can see our proposed schedule, it assumes that November start date with a kickoff, and you can see, again, the three phases. Discovery starts with the kickoff, we have stakeholder engagement, which kind of bleeds over into the opportunity phase, ending with an analysis of Waco's competitive position. Looking around February, we would begin the opportunity phase, kind of looking at the strategic direction, going through all the way to the opportunity workshop, and that's really when we will work with city staff, stakeholders needed to identify key priorities going forward, making sure that what we, as a firm, have heard and developed reflects community priorities. Then that third phase of implementation, taking what we've talked about in the opportunity workshop, and really making sure that it's something that can be implemented by the city, and that wraps up at the end of July. Next slide, please. With that, I will end our presentation, and thank you for your time. I say that we're very excited to work with you, I think this is going to be a great project, and we are available if you have any questions.
Questions or comments?
Holmes here, just, yeah, I'm excited to have TIP Strategies involved in helping us take next steps in our economic development. I know we've had a degree of success here these last three and four years of bringing new businesses to Waco, and we're excited about that. But as we, I'm not saying we get selective about how, how, how our economic development works, because a lot of it's just market-driven, but for us to kind of pivot into or steer towards certain strategies that are a little more tactical on, on getting certain businesses to Waco, into downtown Waco, and white-collar jobs, and higher-paying jobs, and just doing the best we can to steer those kind of businesses to Waco as well. But again, I think we've had great success. I see Chris Collins here from the Greater Waco Chamber, who's been very helpful in getting those businesses to come to Waco, so I'm excited about the continuation of that, and putting some strategy around it. So, I'm happy for this partnership, look forward to the results.
Real quick, Kent, did you have more to add to this presentation? I see another slide.
Just wanted to wrap up with our next steps, of course, our next couple of weeks, we'll be negotiating the final agreement with TIP Strategies for their services. A large portion of this will be spent gathering data and performing analysis, and lastly, over the eight to ten months it'll take to complete the project, we'll generate the strategic plan.
Echoing what Councilmember Holmes said, I'm really excited about this, we've had lots of conversations on council of how do we be incredibly strategic in having a multi- a multifaceted economic development plan? So I'm thrilled that we're going to be looking at this both from a small-business entrepreneur lens all the way up to big industry and thinking through what sorts of sectors we want to attract. One piece, or one question I have for the TIP team is, I'm curious if in previous projects or in this project, y'all will offer recommendations for populations that have had high barriers to job access, whether it's folks that have been formerly incarcerated, people with disabilities, people with only a high school or GED education, and how we can really come alongside these more marginalized residents in our larger equitable economic development approach?
Yes, that will be part of the plan. When we do an analysis on the workforce and the current state of it, that will take those elements in consideration, and it'll also go into the recommendations of either how you should approach your workforce development or talent traction, and being inclusive of all components of the community. Yes?
Excellent. Thank you. And Tracy, we're thrilled to have a Waco native be a part of this, and you're so familiar with the complexities and the strengths and the challenges we face, so thanks for being a part of this.
Thank you. I'm excited.
Other comments? Questions?
I'll just echo what's been said. Ms. McDaniel, so excited to have you join us again, just having someone from Waco, be able to assist our community in this moment is incredibly exciting. I know from your resume that you've participated, among other things that you've done, really helped grow the state of Texas economy to where it is today, and I think we're benefiting from your work, working for Texas governors and recent history right now in this moment. So I'm excited to learn from you and learn with you. I'm excited for the, Waco has great economic development partners in our community, our chambers, organizations like Startup Waco. We have great educational institutions from our public schools all the way up through TSTC, MCC, and Baylor, and then other great stakeholders in the community like City Center Waco and Prosper Waco. And I think us all coming together around a strategic action plan for really having, being thoughtful in how we seize this moment that we all see ourselves in. I mean, you just, it was funny when Hello Bello was here last week, some of their senior leadership team was like, man, it's just in the air that there's something happening here, and it's growing. And I kind of pushed back on it a little bit to just say, are you just saying that? Like, because you have to say that, because you're here for a ribbon cutting? They're like, no, I'm, we go to other cities, and we can feel it in the air. There's momentum and excitement and opportunity here that is real. And I think there's a combination of things that have created that. I think it's a legacy of hard work in this community with strategic partnerships, and people who have come before us on this council and in this community to really build up a strong economy. I think it's our geographic location and some other factors that allow for us to seize this moment strategically to ensure that Waco has a robust economy that works for everybody, and where everyone conceives this moment, and we can have this diversified ecosystem where we have great industry, great manufacturing, great distribution. We're, as Jen mentioned, we're being thoughtful about how we get executive positions into our community. We're being thoughtful about how we support small business. I think another thing is, we have all of these partners in our community and just examining, are we all functioning well together? Are there, is there room for growth in how we partner with one another? And again, that's not to say that we don't have a great track record of good work, it's just to say, how do we ensure that we're seizing this moment well to move forward? So I'm thankful to our city staff for their work of pulling together us to this point, and know that we've got a bright future in the, Waco's economy has a bright future because this council and our staff and our community partners are committed to taking a proactive approach to growing our economy for everybody. So excited for the days ahead. We're thrilled for this, and Ms. McDaniel, can't wait to get you back to your hometown to get to meet you in person and hear about the good days ahead.
Thank you. I'm excited also.
All right. Thank you, Bradley.
Thank you.
And I'll let you introduce the next presentation.
I'd be glad to. Thanks, Mayor. We, the next one is fun, too. It's Work Session 791. It's a discussion of solid waste alley and illegal dumping program. We have Cody Patel, Assistant Director of Solid Waste, joining us here at the table, and he'll be providing us an update on the alley maintenance approach, which he's designed and started to implement. The council will remember from a recent informal report, some of that work. So he'll start you off with a summary of where they're headed and what they've done to date, and I'm excited about the approach Cody's used. It's pretty intentional, all the way from the design of the program, all the way to communicating about it. So I look forward to the council hearing this update and providing us feedback. Cody?
Thank you, City Manager Ford, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for this opportunity for Solid Waste to provide this update on the alley and illegal dumping program. So today, we will be going over the program history, the statistics and trends, the revisions for this year and moving forward, program goals, and the outreach and education campaign. So anytime you have any questions or discussion, you know, we can make this a conversation or a presentation, wherever y'all want to do. We will start with the program history. In 1997, Solid Waste implemented, or started the pilot program for the automated curb-side collection, which was what we have today citywide. 2000, there was a citywide implementation of automation, and then in 2009, there was a, I'll say that, with the citywide implementation, there was a small area in District Four that was left out of this and was still serviced through dumpsters in the alleyway. In 2009, Solid Waste and City removed those dumpsters and converted those residential homes to curb-side collection. So you can see the picture in the top right corner. That's what, you know, what we were looking at whenever in 2009, when we were servicing the alleys through the, servicing the alleys with dumpsters rather than curb-side collection. So we did have some issues where illegal dumping was happening, we had some public health concerns, and then also, you know, that broken window theory, and converting these to curb-side collection did improve some of that, but we still do have some of the illegal dumping.
Cody, just to make this a really fun back-and-forth conversation?
Yeah.
I was talking earlier in our agenda review about what's colloquially referred to as Dumpster Alley, which is in District Four between Pinewood and Class A and Harvest on 25th, which looks kind of like this top photo. It's not quite that drastic, but I'd say it's 75% of the way there. Do we have an idea of how many dumpsters we still have in alleys across the city?
Yes, we do. I don't have that number for you right now, but we can get it a little bit in the presentation. I'll show you. But we have eight points, 8.6 miles of the alley network we have, we utilize for solid waste operations, which is about 14% of our network.
Okay. I'd be curious, maybe in a future informal report or even just an email, to know how many of these we have, at least in District Four, to have on my radar, since I get lots of emails and questions about the various state of our alley.
Yes, and I think I know the alley you're talking about, but we do service some apartment complexes and quite a few businesses that are mainly downtown, those are serviced through dumpsters in the alleyway.
Quick note on that, that's funny. I lived on Dumpster Alley for years, and there was, when I first moved into that block, it did look like that top screen. I was like, got some friends, we're just going to clean this up, and if we clean it up, it'll like go away. And we like spent like an afternoon, like playing pump-up music, got it looking shiny, and like the next day, it looked like the top photo again. We're like, what are we? So, so all I have to say is, I know that you guys have, it's a challenge to keep, for those existing dumpsters, it's a challenge to keep it not looking like that, and I think, you know, again, look forward to continuing to hear some ideas and solutions.
So in 2009, again, we pulled those dumpsters out of the alley, converted those residential homes that were predominantly in District Four, converted those to curb-side collection. At that time, we had a contract with Goodwill for 84 litter abatement that was required with our contract with City of Woodway for the landfill purchase and through TCQ regulation. So we amended that contract to include removal of litter and light trash in those residential alleys. In 2009, the focus was on the alleys that recently had the dumpsters removed, and again, this was predominantly in District Four. In 2009, that funding was increased by $60,000 for the litter removal. This was a reoccurring contract on an annual basis, and so just went on, went on. 2017, our alley program was expanded to include mowing and brush removal services. Again, still focused predominantly in District Four, with the funding growing to $195,000 at that point. In 2020, our funding has grown to $240,000, still focused predominantly District Four. 2020, we have COVID hit, we start seeing some pretty extreme labor shortages, equipment issues, some issues with our PUP program as well. And so we did not use all the funds that were allocated for 2020. So rather than create a new contract, we amended our 2020 contract to utilize those funds, added some additional funds, and then in 2021, the alley program was expanded citywide to include District One, Two, Three, and Five. So previously, our program operated with Goodwill in the alleys. So we provided two different lists. Our environmental deputies provided weekly lists for illegal dump sites to clean, and that was in combination with our PUP program. The Solid Waste admin team would provide bi-weekly lists of alleyways to focus on, and then starting this previous year, we were rotating through our districts to spend an equal amount of time in districts. Goodwill would report back when the alleys were completed, we would track that data, and then Goodwill and the environmental deputies would report back all of their, you know, data, their, you know, how much they collected, fuel reports, activity, they've done that, so we could track that and report that, those programs. So moving into statistics and trends, we'll start with alleyway statistics. So we have about 61 miles of alleys within the city of Waco. Unfortunately, this past year, we were only able to get to about a third of our network, which our goal really is to get to all of our network at least once in a fiscal year. A bigger reason for that, again, COVID-related, we, Goodwill was seeing some significant labor shortage, equipment issues, and then without the utilization of our PUP program to help with illegal dumping, we did have to share resources to make sure we had a control on our illegal dumping throughout the year, and you'll see some stats on that on the next slide. And again, Solid Waste, we utilized about 8.6% of the alleys for our operations. So for illegal dumping statistics, for the, so for the past three years, you know, pre-COVID, COVID, and kind of where we're at now with COVID, just learning to live with it, right? You can see that most of the numbers are generally close to the same, except for the tires, and then the last, the last row, I'd like to point out that the number of trustees and the number of labor hours are zeroed out, and that's, the PUP program was basically shut down due to COVID protocols, and so that really did have an impact on our alley program, and so we had to share resources, shift priorities, to make sure that the illegal dumping in our city did not, you know, just overwhelm us and get out of control. So if you look at that last column, you'll see that the pounds of litter collected through the illegal dumping program really maintained over the last three years, and that's in this, last year, and that is with a lot less resources available to us. So that's why you do see a drop-off, and you saw on the previous slide with the alley program. So for the fun stuff, program revisions for this year and moving forward. So first off, I would like to thank Mayor, Council, City Management for having the faith in Solid Waste to take on this program internally, a budgeting for five new positions to help us run this program. So we, with the five positions, one is a supervisor, that position is already on board, and we've hit the ground running. Jason Embry, doing a fantastic job. We actually, he sent us some before and after pictures of an alley he recently completed, and it really does look fantastic. We hope to share that with y'all soon. We, the crew leader and the three maintenance worker positions, they are posted, advertised. We started interviews, and hopefully we can get some folks on board. But again, we have started work with illegal dumping and with the, with the alley program, and I do've got to, I've got to give our staff some kudos. You know, we started October 1, and we got Mr. Embry hired pretty quickly, and he, like I said, hit the ground running. We had a backlog of probably two to three months of illegal dumping that hadn't been addressed, and he put that, we borrowed a crew leader from another crew, we used some temps, used some other staff, and we knocked that list out, a two- to three-month list in about two weeks, week and a half to two weeks, and so that, they did a really good job. They put some effort in, and I'm personally very proud of them. We are going to continue our partnership with Goodwill and McLennan County Sheriff. Goodwill will be continuing their work on Highway 84. Again, that litter abatement is required by our contract with the City of Woodway from the landfill purchase and required by TCQ regulation. With our partnership with McLennan County Sheriff through an interlocal agreement, we are contracting four deputies. Two are focused citywide for enforcement of illegal dumping and environmental crimes. One is focused solely downtown, and then we have another that is stationed at the landfill and operating our, managing our PUP program, and that's helping with wind-blown litter and debris that, again, that's another requirement for our landfill permit through TCQ. So for program goals, how, what, when, where? That's going to be the big question, right? How, when are we going to get to your alley? How often are we going to get to your alley? What's it going to look like when we leave? So for year one, our goal is to service all the alleys once. We know that we have a lot of learning to do ahead of us with starting a new program, and then year two, moving forward, our goal is to service all the alleys at least two to three times throughout the year. So we want to maintain those alleys in such a condition that we can move through those a lot quicker than what we're going to in our first year. And so I think the big question is going to be, what's it going to look like when we get through? Our goal is, you know, we're not, we're not going to be in the landscaping business, right? We're going to be creating an accessible path, so 15 to 20-foot wide, 10 to 12-foot high, doing some mowing, light trim, light trimming, you know, no major tree removal. That's really, I wouldn't, not to, don't mean to say it this way, but that's not really up our alley. Couldn't help myself.
Did he just get a solid from Councilmember Ward? Like a two and a half stars.
That's rare.
So for frequency on, frequency on illegal dumping, obviously, you know, we're not going to, can't really schedule that, that's really a reactionary activity. We can't plan when somebody's going to do that. We really just, our goal is to have an average of three business days response time upon the investigation completion. So somebody, say, Mayor Mickey calls us, and you say, hey, there's, we reported this illegal dumping, well, what we do is, our team will go out, look at this, look at the site, see if there's any identifiable information or material out there where we can take enforcement action with our deputies. If there is, we'll, their deputy, we'll turn it over to the deputies, they'll start a case, and they'll, they'll take that on. If there's not, or say that case gets complete and that they weren't able to take that enforcement action, at that point, we consider it investigation complete, we put it on our list, and then we want to get that cleaned up in a three-business daytime period. So for scheduling, and this is mainly towards alleys, the time spent in district. For year one, our goal is to spend an equal amount of time in Districts One, Two, and Four, and then not forget about District Three and Five. District Three has nine alleys, District One, y'all have exactly one alley, or, yeah, District Five, y'all have exactly one alley. We won't forget about y'all.
Make sure it stays clean.
So, District Three alleys, are those primarily in the Brookview neighborhood?
I, I'd have to check, but we can get y'all an overall map of the alleys within the city.
Thank you.
So the thought on spending equal amount of time for the first year is that District One and District Two have quite a few alleys, and they haven't been maintained in quite some time. So it's going to take us a little bit longer to get through some of those alleys than we have, than we have seen in District Four. I mean, you might argue that some of the alleys still are not up to the shape we might want them in District Four, but there's some alleys in District One and Two where you literally, you cannot see from one point to the next, and so, and we have some pictures. We actually have one where we have our before and after. I think it will tell a good story of why we're taking this approach of an equal time. So right now, what we're, what we're doing is, we're taking our map and trying to strategically plan out a two-week, rotating two-week schedule from District One, Two, and Four for year one, or until we can get through all of the alleys. At that point, once we've addressed all the alleys at least once, we want year two and four, we want to spend a proportional amount of time in these districts. So there's 64% of the alleys in District Four. For the alley program, we would spend 64% of our time in District Four. We also want to increase our efforts to abandon alleyways to citizens. There's already a, there's already a platform to do this through a petition process, but it is quite cumbersome on the citizen and on staff, and so our goal is to work through some of those challenges you see listed on the slide, and make that to where it's easier on staff, easier on the citizens, to where we can reduce our overall network of alleys, especially if they're not being utilized for city services or access.
So with the increased effort to abandon, so what I'm hoping I'm hearing you say is, in the process, as we do the cleaning and as we do the mitigation of the alleyways, I'm not going to encourage someone to take, you know, to take this said alley until it's clean? Is that right?
I would agree with that. I think that's, some of the alleys that have not been maintained in some time, it would be hard for us to, you know, expect the citizen to be able to take a chainsaw and a bobcat and really take, do that, so, yes, I would. and really take, do that, so yes, I would agree with that. And so on the last part of this slide is, with solid waste, one of the things we say is if you don't track it, you can't change it. So we, and we've already started that, we've done that in the past, track, monitor, and be able to report on our program. We want a, we want a program that is transparent, and we have some accountability built into it. So if we're doing a good job, we have the data, we have the stats, that we can, we can pat ourselves on the back and tell people that we're doing a good job. But if we're, if we're not getting it done, if we're not being efficient, then we can identify that early on, and we can adapt and adjust to make sure the program stays successful. For outreach and education, as far as alley illegal dumping program, our, our focus for outreach and education is going to be on reporting illegal dumping. I think that will be very beneficial for solid waste, for the citizens, and for the city overall. We'll be working with municipal information to create video PSAs, everyone loves those. If y'all ever want to volunteer, I'm sure we can get y'all in there. Flyers, social media posts, I'm working with Mallette and Rolando and the Neighborhood Engagement Team. Our team is very active in the Neighborhood Association meetings, presenting, going to and visiting with the community. And a lot of the questions we get are, hey, this, this lot has had illegal dumping on it for a week or two weeks, and nobody's done anything. Usually, we don't know about it. So that's, that's our biggest, what we, what we sell in those Neighborhood Association meetings is that we're, we're really a part of, we're a partner in the community, and the more we can, the neighborhood's going to see the issues long before solid waste starts. And the more communication we can get back from the community, the, the more reactive we can do, the better service we can provide to the citizens. So we have, we have so many different forms of communication. We have the illegal dumping forum on our website, you can get us on email, Facebook, text messages, smoke signals, whatever you want to get, we'll sure we can, we'll get it and we'll put it on our list. And then lastly, utilizing our Waco curbside app, that you already have the ability to directly report illegal dumping in that app, but we're going to build a, build a message, a messaging and a campaign within that app that if you signed up to get messages, we can send you out a how-to and where to put this information. So, everybody's favorite slide, that wraps up what I have, so if y'all have any questions or discussions, please let me know.
Questions for Cody?
Sure, as the, as the alley queen, I will take it away.
That with one alley.
Yeah, you have one alley. Alley holes. Okay, A, Cody, this is a phenomenal presentation. Thank you for creating this and your thoughtful engagement, and the letter that you wrote for later in the agenda packet, that was really A-plus work, and I really appreciate it. Couple of quick questions. So it sounds like maybe some of the difference between the almost two-thirds of the alleys we have in D four versus D one and D two is maybe D four has had more of the mowing and brush side that hasn't been done in D one and D two? Am I hearing that right?
That, that is correct.
Okay.
As well as some of the litter and illegal dumping as well. Some, some of the alleys in District One and District Two are so overgrown that you might not even be able to see some of the debris that's in there.
Right. Yeah, okay, that's helpful. I regularly walk the district, and I can hit about four neighborhood associations of my eight on my walk, and I'm, I feel like what I'm seeing mostly is a lot of trash and debris as opposed to overgrown. I mean, there's some overgrown, but I'd say the dumping and the trash problem is a little bit more significant. Dylan, our Mayor Meek, I think you and I can do some trash cleanups, pump some music, hit, hit the dumpster alley. I wonder, especially now that we have Ashley Millard on our staff, if there are some campaigns we could do with Keep Waco Beautiful that are specifically trash cleanups in the alleys to kind of hit the one-two punch of maybe more of the brush and mowing removal in, when we're hitting one district, kind of being able to do both at the same time of using city staff and Keep Waco Beautiful. Yeah, but really excited that you guys are focusing on this because the need is great. If we do move in the direction of alley abandonment, I would like us to consider thoughtfully how we're going to address the issue of fences, since the majority of these are in the core of the city where we know we have a lot of our more low to moderate income residents. I think fences are really expensive. My husband and I bought a house earlier this year, and we have built one side of our fence. So I imagine that I, as a, my social location, if that's difficult, then that's even more exacerbated for the majority of our neighbors, so getting creative in how we address that.
Sure. Thank you, Cody. I think that, that this was phenomenal work by your team and your staff, and how we tackled this big problem. I think that the encouragement of, of our citizens utilizing and, and us really digging deep and making it functional and user-friendly, the app will be pivotal in this, in how I am able to report illegal dumping and not having to go through meticulous process. But I think the commitment to the consistency, those three days, three business days, and get it, you know, post the investigation is the key part. I think that, you know, many times it's, yes, I've called and reported this illegal dumping, and, you know, to no fault of anyone, thank you, we're excited about the new staff in addition, so that you'll have the manpower to get it all done, no one's blaming, you know, anybody. But that there is a, you can, there's an expectation, you know, so once, you know, I've reported, and then I think in the app, if I remember correctly, you know, there's a thing, I don't know if you can track that, you know, if it's been investigated, if this is the thing, or am I mixing other things with it?
You're, you're on the right track, because remember, we have the, we have the solid waste app, and then we have the citizen reporting tool app.
There you go.
And you're thinking of the citizen reporting tool app that's coming out in the next couple of months, which will have the ability to monitor a complaint like that and see if it's resolved.
So, I mean, I think that these are the things that will help our people feel more confident, and, and, and know and love solid waste as they should. I mean, because, you know, it, it's all well and good till your trash doesn't get picked up, and then we got some problems. So I'm super excited about that. I think that, you know, taking control, you know, being deliberate in how we hire, being consistent in our, our delivery, setting a level of expectation, and then encouraging people to inspect what they expect is how we're going to continue to go forward and move, move into a cleaner, cleaner, safer place. So we appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
Homes over here, just the, I, I agree with bringing this in-house. We had a great relationship, we still, continue to have a great relationship with, with Goodwill, a great partnership there. But I think this is allows us, bringing this function in-house allows us a little more control.
Yep.
Measurement, prioritization, action, things you were talking about, strategy. And I think it's a nice goal to have service all these alleys two to three times a year. Sixty miles of, of alleys. I'm curious, and maybe this is for an informal report, maybe first quarter, second quarter, about abandonment, because that, that appeals to me, where we can actually, you know, give land back to the, to the citizens, particularly where their owner occupied, where there's not right-of-way easement, utility issues, and I don't know if we can set some sort of checklist on, here's all the abandon, here's all the alleys, here's the ones that don't have any right-of-way issues, here's the ones that have owner-occupied folks that, and to Councilmember Bearfield's observation, somehow get the fence, you know, issues, if there's some kind of program we can work with there on a city-sponsored deal, just push that fence back. I'm curious to how many miles of that sixty miles could be eliminated just by giving that land back to the, back to the, to the homeowners. And then finally, I'm, I'm just trying to get my mind around on these alleys, will we still have roll-offs in certain alleys? Like, I mean, the picture shows you've got a dumpster there. I think folks in general, I'm trying to figure out with the mayor's example of.
There's an apartment complex on the other side of the alley, so that was not suited for, for curbside, and it was designed before we required, I mean, I'm, this is my assumption of it, that it was designed before we required apartment complexes to find space in their parking lots for dumpsters. So right now, if you have a multifamily resident, you can require that. Am I, am I right about this, Bradley?
Yeah, we probably need somebody more knowledgeable than me. No, it's, it's right, but I can't, I can't quote, quote chapter and verse.
When I've developed apartment complexes before in my personal life, like, there's been requirements for you to have a dumpster on-site. And you have to, like, have space in your parking lot, and it has to be screened, and the trash truck has to be able to enter and exit. And if you look at this parking lot, I would have a hard time knowing where you put a dumpster on-site.
So I'm just trying to, and I know you guys will figure this all out, but there's some element, I mean, maybe it's a small element of good faith, where people at least are trying to centralize their garbage somewhere. I mean, it's terrible that it's in a public alley, but if there's a need for roll-offs in certain places, I don't know, let's analyze that too. If it can be maintained, you know, in a regular, clean, maintained fashion, maybe there's some, I'm sure you've thought through all this stuff, but I just want to avoid what the mayor's talking about. You know, people get together, clean it up, and then the next day, it's just where it was. So let's get creative where we can. Great presentation, Cody, appreciate it.
I just think this is a commitment to having a clean, safe city, you know, we're looking at those goals holistically. This is good for public health, this is good for investment in primarily the core of our city. Every generation wants to have clean and safe alleys, and that requires proactivity and strategy. And that's what this presentation represents. I think that the pounds that have been collected are staggering, the fact that we're collecting that much shows a commitment to do good work. I told that story to illustrate the challenges that this department faces all over our community. I've also patrolled District Four alleys, and I know that once it's cleaned, it's sterling. It's just how do we, you know, and continue to maintain it? I think a lot of times, a lot of the people that are doing the dumping don't, aren't utilizing that alley. Again, there's an apartment complex behind me, and I would see people day and night go and drop trash in there, and they're putting it in the dumpster, but then I'll see a truck, pickup truck drive through, and would see, you know, them throw some stuff down because there's an alley nearby there and just kind of scram. And so I think that there's, there is the illegal dumping that you represent, or that you, you discussed, that I'm excited to season proactive strategies in the enforcement of that. I, and I'm, you know, I did kind of speak from what my understanding of the situation is, but if there's creative ways to get out, dumpsters out of alleys, then I'll, I'll be in favor of it. I think that one thing to keep in mind is I think that it is the responsibility of owners of the property to maintain the alleys. And I think that when it becomes a challenge is when, one, if you were to buy a property or inherit a property, you're renting a property, and it's so overgrown, that you're like, I don't even know where to start, like, I need to, you know, do I need to go buy a chainsaw to get this thing maintained? And so I think that there's, if it does get so overgrown, it's hard to ask owners to take care of it, but I do think there's a component to reminding owners that this is technically your responsibility to mow and keep this. It's also hard, though, when you, if you are responsible for keeping up an alley, and a couch keeps ending up in the back, in your back alley too, we're like, well, what am I supposed to do with this?
Correct.
So I think that, you know, it is challenging, it is challenging, but you've created proactive solutions. This is something we've talked about for a while, we've seen progress, we're going to continue to see progress through these efforts. One other idea, just a small idea I had, and this is not the, the primary goal, the primary goal is to have clean, safe alleys, and I think we have a great plan for that. But another thought is also, Cody, as your, your team is going into alleys, if there's a way, Bradley, we could train them to be the eyes and ears of other things, you know, for example, animal welfare violations in yards, or code enforcement violations, your, your team is going to see things pretty close up, and as we try to, you know, build up a code enforcement office that says, hey, we're going to hold slum lords to take care of their property. And we're gonna, if, you know, if you have, if your property's out of code compliance, then we're going to have a, a resource for you to repair your property, but you, you have to take care of your property. And so even, I know your focus is on alleyways, but I would say if you see other, if your team knows about other violations and can utilize that citizen engagement tool, or, or have a means with which to report that, it seems like we would, the, the city might get an even better return on investment for the work that we're doing here as well. But I know the primary goal is clean, safe alleys, and that's going to be a big project in itself.
Well, speaking on the code, our, our alley crew, actually, we had a meeting with the code enforcement team last week, and we're already setting up regular meetings because really, those, those two teams are integral and successive for each other, right?
Love it.
So we, that, that is something that we are actively, we've actively started, and so we creating that, creating that partnership, that teamwork, getting to know each other. So we had a meet and greet, like I said, last week, and we're going to continue that, so.
Way to go. Great presentation, thanks. Any other questions? I think we have one more presentation, Bradley. I'll let you introduce it.
Okay, I'll do that. All right, our last presentation is our fourth quarter financial update. We're joined by Nick Sarpey, our Director of Office and Management and Budget on Works Session seven ninety-two. I'm excited for two reasons for this presentation. Number one, it's just really strong results. This, we closed out this quarter, as Nick's going to show you, and I'll try not to steal his thunder here, but we closed out just very nicely on both the revenue and expense side in most every fund that he's going to report today. And then the second reason I'm excited is because he's got a new questions slide at the end, which I think is his best work so far. So, Nick, go ahead, Nick, thank you.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So as Bradley mentioned, I'm here to present the fourth quarter financial report. So just a quick overview of the fourth quarter report. It's an audited financials through the end of September, all the non-financial data is the most current. It's a comparison of the, there's a comparison of budget and the same period of last year, and then projections for all revenue and expense categories match actuals. All right, so for the general fund, the general fund revenues were two-point-four million dollars more than last year, and eight-point-three million more than budgeted. Revenues for the general fund totaled one-hundred-and-sixty-one-point-three million for the year, and were driven higher by increased sales and property taxes. Expenditures for the general fund were seven-point-six million less than budget, which is, but they're higher than last year, primarily driven because, driven higher because of transfers for economic development and a reduction of the assigned fund balance in the general fund, and this was done on purpose. So our water fund, revenues for the water fund came in below budget at fifty-three-point-one million, while expenses also came under budget at forty-nine-point-seven million. These two factors combined resulted in the fund generating additional working capital than what was originally budgeted for. The wastewater fund generated revenues that exceeded budget, and expenses for the wastewater fund were below budget, came in at ninety-five-point-two percent, generating three-point-nine million dollars in additional working capital compared to the budgeted amount of one-point-six Overall, WMars generated ninety-six-point-seven percent of budgeted revenues, and expenses were seventy-six percent of budget. The solid waste fund generated revenues that exceed budget, were one-hundred-and-eight-point-one percent of the budgeted amount, and expenses were below budget, ninety-six-point-four percent. The increased revenues for the fund combined with the lower expenses generated over one million dollars in additional working capital, which is two-point-five million more than what was originally budgeted. The airport fund generated revenues in excess of, in excess of expense for the year by seven-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand. The increased revenues from operations as a result of increased travel in the second half of the year, along with expenses being below budget, contributed to the increase in fund working capital. For the convention service fund, although revenues were below budget, the department effectively managed expenses throughout the year, and kept them significantly below budget, which resulted in the fund generating more than two-point-three million dollars in additional working capital. For the Texas Ranger Hall of Fame, the revenues exceeded budget by three-point-seven percent, while expenses came in right at budget. For the Cameron Park Zoo, it continued to perform for the rest, for the remainder of the year. We've talked about the zoo and the performance throughout this year, and how well they've done in generating revenues, both from admissions as well as from merchandise sales. And they continue that in the fourth quarter of the year. For the Cottonwood Golf Court, Golf Course, it generated revenues that exceeded budget, that were at one-hundred-and-four-point-eight percent of budget, while expenses were at eighty-three-point-two percent. All right, so the fourth quarter investment results. Overall, the total investment portfolio for the city is fifty-three-point-four, fifty-three, five-hundred-and-thirty-four-point-one million. The city's investment portfolio for the quarter yielded point-two-three-six percent compared to the one-hundred-and-eighty-day treasury yield of point-zero-five percent. The city's weighted average maturity is three-hundred-and-four days compared to one-hundred-and-eighty-four days in the prior quarter, and for the year, the investments generated one-point-two million dollars in revenue. So in summary, the budget- So in summary, um, the budget for fiscal year twenty-one was set to be conservative on purpose because of the unknowns related to COVID, um, but as the vaccines became available and things started to return more to normal, uh, we started to see the growth and increase in revenues for the year. The increased sales tax allowed us to provide additional funding for, um, special project reserve fund, which we, um, have been using to invest in state facilities, while used for fleet equipment and other strategic capital investments. And lastly, here is the updated question slide.
Ah, there it is.
I had nothing to do with this, this is completely Jose and municipal information, and Kathy with the city attorney's office all came up with this idea.
Thank you for that clarification, but, oh, no, it's great. Um, do you have a total of the net revenues, um, from the funds at the beginning of your presentation?
The, for all the funds?
Yeah.
I can get you the total revenues for all the funds.
Yeah, I just be curious what that total number is, very, we're going through that, and started to try to do math, and then I just said, I'll wait for a question.
Big number. Of note, um, you know, it's, I feel bad for the parks, uh, and golf team, they ended up about seven thousand dollars short of covering their entire operation with their revenue, which is, uh.
Wow.
When we considered, I think their transfer in was planned to be six-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars or so, they were within just a few hundred rounds of breaking even, so kudos to the golf team out there, um, they've done a, done a really fabulous job this year.
I, I just think, um, the total net revenues from the funds, and by that, by when I say net revenues, I mean, what we budgeted, uh, or, or, um, what we received less what we budgeted, like, that's the number that, that I'm looking for. Um, and then I guess one-point-two million in investment revenue, is that right? Okay, that's great, exciting.
Um, Holmes over here, Nick, thanks for this presentation, and I like the thumbnails of the, of the different, um, cost centers, I'd call them, you, you hit on the three things I like to look at, the last year's year-to-date, this year's budget year-to-date, and this year's budget, or this year's actual, and, and those slides that you shown are the exact three things that I look at, uh, when analyzing any statement, so this is, it's great. And just, as I look to divide those twelve or so slides into kind of three groups, you got the general fund, which I think the big story there is, as you said, uh, Nick, the sales tax recovery, that's such a big part of, of how this council budgets, and, and as staff budgets the year, what we can expect that to be, and in the middle of COVID, there was such volatility to that, 'cause it, it was, there was a couple of months there where, I think, I was very highly concerned about how we were going to complete last year's budget as well as figure out what we were gonna do, uh, this year, but thanks to, you know, small businesses in Waco, and the kind of recovery here post, uh, where we are in the pandemic, and, and people getting back on their feet, and, uh, just a great economic environment right now, so the sales tax figures were very good, uh, in the, in the fourth quarter, and, uh, and I think we have a conservative budget for, for next year too on sales tax, I feel really good about where that's going. Um, the second kind of group where the util, to me, are the utilities, water, wastewater, solid waste, um, W-Mars, and again, water, I think it's the first time since I've been on council where wa, water revenue is actually down year over year, um, but the other ones were sort of flat, but I think we did an excellent job in containing, uh, costs that are associated with that, with that revenue, so, uh, overall, uh, the, all the utilities are, were looking good. And then really, the third group, as I look at it, are these, uh, city public amenity platforms, or however you want to call the zoo, the Ranger Museum, and the Cottonwood, and, uh, the Convention Center, again, good trends, slowly recovering post-COVID here in this, particularly in the fourth quarter, um, but seeing, uh, annual trends looking better than, than, twenty-twenty-one was better than twenty-twenty, thank goodness. Um, and really, as, as, as the city manager Ford mentioned, the golf course, basically, for the first time that I've been there, basically kind of broke even, or was, or was, was ahead of, of projections. And again, the Rangers, and the Ranger Hall of Fame, and the Cameron Park Zoo, and the Convention Center with hotel, motel tax revenue going up, things looking good there. Um, and again, attendance trends and revenue, gate revenue and merch trends are positive across the board, so I'm excited about how the year ended, and I just think we've got great, uh, tailwinds going into this new fiscal year, so I appreciate the reporting, it's, it's looking good, Nick, thanks.
Um, what, you go back to the, um, sales tax slide?
Yeah, it's at the, the sales tax information's at the bottom.
Um, I just think this, this, uh, this whole presentation represents, um, our city staff and council's commitment to, um, having a smart budget, um, and also represents, uh, what's happening in our economy right now, we're seeing strength, and again, I think that's the work of strategy and proactivity, um, and I'm really thankful for the results of this presentation, good job.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's the last presentation, are there any requests for future gen items? If not, we will now recess the work session and reconvene the regular session for executive sessions right into the city secretary at four forty-one PM, and I'll say really quick, it's not too late to go vote if you haven't.
Notice is hereby given, the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, Attorney Briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, Senate Bill eighteen-twenty-seven, passed on the, in the eighty-seventh regular session of the Texas Legislature, State of Texas and Texas Political Subdivisions, Opioid Abatement Fund Council and Settlement Allocation Term Sheet. Two, Real Property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072, and three, Economic Development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. We are now in executive session at four forty-two PM.